Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 19th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Bell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Prinsvey, roll call, please.
Chair Rossler, last of record, we left at all. Commissioners are present. Chair Alexis Wolf is absent.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, before you, it's the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of our October 15th meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? And if there are none, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there are no changes, I recommend that the minutes be approved as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Garretson?
I would second that.
All right. We have, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 15th meeting. Please cast your vote. And the minutes are approved unanimously. Next item on our agenda, our agenda changes. Ms. Chow, any changes to tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Chairman Rossler. No changes tonight. Thank you.
Right. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is a time that the commission sets aside to hear from members of the public on items that are not on our agenda. I have no speaker slips for oral communication. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move along to our public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. In our process, the staff will make a presentation. The applicant will come and add to that presentation with additional information. I will then open the public hearing and call people who have filled out a speaker slip. And I call them normally in the order that I have received them, and they, those people will testify. You have three minutes. We'll be running our light system this evening. And then we will close after all of the public testimony. We will close the public hearing, open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners, and then make a decision and take a vote. So our first public hearing is PC 2-125 Alta Vista Nine Lot Tentative Subdivision Map. Commissioners, the staff received late yesterday afternoon a letter from an adjacent property owner requesting a continuance. Under the previous approval that you noted in the staff report, there was a sewer easement that went down to South Santa Fe. Staff has talked to the applicant, and I believe that they can work out sewer access between this new project and the adjacent property owner. So I'm not of a mind to continue the project, but we'll be open to listening to the adjacent property owner and the owner and seeing if we can't work out a sewer access for both of them. So with that said, Mr. Winters, your staff report, please. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick disclosure, I and my wife own and live about a mile from this project. I don't have any personal connection to the owners, to any of the neighbors. I haven't discussed the project with anyone. I don't think there's any apparent or real conflict of interest, but I wanted to disclose it just to be on the safe side.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any other disclosures? Nope. All right. Now, Mr. Winters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rossler, and members of the commission. This presentation is for the Alta Vista Nine Lot Subdivision Map that has been submitted by the applicant Henderson Land Company. To summarize, the project involves a subdivision of one existing 3.18 acre parcel into nine single-family residential lots and one private street lot. The project would include connections for all utilities, stormwater drainage improvements, and landscaping in compliance with the city's standards. A homeowners association will be required for maintenance of the private street and the landscaped slope areas. The proposal has been designed in conformance with the general plan and zoning designations for the site, and the project would maintain its consistent land use pattern with the surrounding area. The aerial image shows the project site outlined in red. It consists of a vacant 3.18 acre parcel on the south side of Alta Vista Drive. The site is surrounded by single-family residences and a few other vacant parcels. The subject site and all surrounding properties are zoned to R1 residential, which requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The general plan land use designation is medium-low residential, low-density residential, which allows for a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. The design of the subdivision would allow for the creation of nine lots ranging from 10,000 square feet to 21,338 square feet in size, which is in compliance with the minimum size required by the R1 zone. At a proposed density of 2.8 dwelling units per acre, the project would also comply with the general plan's medium-low density, since it does not exceed five dwelling units per acre. Please note that on this and the following slides, the map is rotated sideways for better viewing. The project frontage on Alta Vista Drive to the north is to the right of the screen. This slide shows an enlargement of the conceptual landscape plan. In compliance with the city's landscape manual, the plan would provide for drought-tolerant trees, shrubs, ground cover plantings along the private street, and for slope erosion control in the areas surrounding the building pads. Regarding the site's topography, the terrain of the site consists of a moderately steep slopes that descend from the northeast towards the southwest. Due to this topography, a system of retaining walls of various height will be necessary to create level building pads and for the construction of the private street. The cross-sections depict the layout terrace pads, depict the layout of the terrace pads as these descend from north to south for cross-section BB, and from east to west as shown on section CC. A mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for the proposed project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This determined that the project would not result in any unmitigated significant environmental impacts. The MND was circulated for public review from September 26 through October 15, 2019. All comments received three letters, and staff's responses are attached to the MND Exhibit A to Exhibit 1. The project will be required to comply with the mitigation measures specified in the MND which are included in the project conditions. Based on feedback received, staff has prepared three additional conditions for inclusion with the project's conditions of approvals. First is that the existing coast live oak trees located within the area of avoidance shown on the tentative subdivision map at the southwest corner of the site shall remain and be preserved in place. This preservation restriction for the area of avoidance shall be included with the project's conditions, covenants, and restrictions. Second, no fencing or walls shall be allowed or constructed within the common landscape slope areas located beyond the edge, top of slope, or rear yard, as applicable, of the individual lots and graded pad areas. HOA maintenance shall be required for the common landscape slopes. These common landscape slope restrictions shall be included in the project's conditions, covenants, and restrictions. Third, the sidewalks located adjacent to the private street as depicted on the preliminary grading and improvement plans shall be constructed of Portland cement concrete. Final design and location of all sidewalks within the project shall be reviewed and approved by the city planner. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission is for adoption of a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Alta Vista Nine Lot Tentative Subdivision Map, and to adopt a resolution approving a tentative subdivision map for the development of nine residential lots and associated improvements on the 3.18 acre site located on the south side of Alta Vista Drive, assessors parcel number 180-290-17, inclusive of the additional conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right. The applicant is Phil Church representing the applicant, or David Lowen?
It would be Dave Lowen and Ben Weiss on behalf of ownership.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dave Lowen. I am the engineer of work on the project. And all I can really add is that I believe staff has done a terrific job. It's a difficult piece of property to develop, as a lot of these infill sites are, and I think we've come up with a reasonable design that works. And I'm available for any questions, and the owner's here as well.
Is that Mr. Church?
No, it's Ben Weiss. I'm not sure who Church is.
All right. Very good. We will handle that next. Any questions for Mr. Lowen? Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. It appears that the streets are private, so there's no parking on the streets, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. It's just fire access, and it follows the hillside requirements, or?
It's a semi-rural, street-standard-based, basically.
Okay. I guess my only concern would be, I live in a similar situation, and I was just wondering how would, what would happen with excess parking? I mean, how did you look at that? If there's, someone has a dinner party or something, where would those?
They'd have to make arrangements. Honestly, the streets there to serve the lots and to provide emergency access. I don't know if we can, if there's any parking in the cul-de-sac or not. I know that the homes are set back far enough that you can park tandem in the, you know, in the driveways, but other than that, thank you.
Commissioner, if I can just chime in, I looked at the measurements of a few of the driveways and the lots, and as Mr. Lowen stated, there's enough of a depth to where you could have potentially, on some of the properties, four cars in the guest parking areas in front of the garage, as well as the two spaces inside of the garage for some of the plots. It wouldn't work in all situations. We also looked at the cul-de-sac area, however, in meeting regional fire department codes for the county, the cul-de-sac would not have a width that would accommodate cul-de-sac parking.
Any other questions? Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, on the parking issues, in the cul-de-sac, on lots five and lot six, we, the driveway that is the length between the street and a house exceeds 15 percent, and we've got about 20 feet from the backside of the sidewalk to the front wall of the garage. So 15 and a half percent is basically a three to three-foot, four-inch incline in 20 feet. It's rather steep. I have concern about safety. Trying to get out of a car on that steep of a gradient can be challenging. So I don't know if there's, I, we've got some retaining walls in the back of lot five and six that range from six feet to 10 feet. So it'd be nice to see if we could massage some of those retaining wall heights to get those grades down.
This is a preliminary design.
Okay.
And in the final engineering, you know, we can, we can address those issues. The driveway is steep on lot, what is it, six? But there are, there are ways of, I don't know that it's exactly 20 feet, you know, I think there's a little more distance so that you have the vertical curve to approach inside the garage, but it is still steep.
So my concern is safety.
Understood.
Because some of these lots are 10,000 feet, there's not a lot of yard space for the kids to play. They're going to end up in the cul-de-sac, and if someone doesn't set that emergency brake with that steep of a drive, there's that possibility. So that's the only reason I wanted to bring that up.
Understood. Thank you.
Lots five and six have split pads, don't they? The garage is at a different elevation than the pad for the, for the house?
Let me whip out my handy-dandy grading plan that I brought with me. I believe you're correct. Yes. There's a six-foot difference between the finished floor of the home and the garage slab on lot six, and the same on five.
Okay. Is there a way to adjust those to address Commissioner Looney's concern?
You know, as an engineer, I like to think anything's possible. You know, it just takes money, and, and the, you know, as long as we can increase the height of the walls and still stay within the city codes for, you know, for wall heights and things like that, yeah, they can be massaged.
Okay. All right. We have received a letter from the property owner to the West concerning the sewer access that was proposed under the previous tentative map. You are now taking your sewer and pumping it back up to Alta Vista, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any, you see any reason why the adjacent property owner couldn't join in and have their sewer pumped up that, in the same pipe? Can you work that out, do you believe?
It's possible. You know, it'd have to defer to the city sanitation department as far as, as far as that goes, because it's all, all private up to that manhole that's roughly 60 feet, what is that, south of Alta Vista? And then, and then it becomes city sewer where it begins gravity flow. But, you know, it's a, it's something that the owners would consider.
Okay.
Commissioner, if I can chime in, I don't think that would work with the city's regulations. If an easement were provided in some means through this property for the neighboring property, I believe it would necessitate a connection to South Santa Fe, if I'm not mistaken. I think the director will chime in.
Pardon me. So they cannot pump into the system that serves the subdivision? They could pump their own sewage up to a main. Any private, single-family homeowner can do a pump system, but it can't be a collective group of homes that pump into a system.
Okay. Very good. All right. So, but there is a solution out there that?
There is either a solution to get an easement through this property to ultimately build a gravity connection down to Santa Fe if the neighbor wants to do so, and we can talk about that, or an opportunity to pump up to Alta Vista if that's feasible.
Okay. Very good. All right, commissioners, any other questions? All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing now, and Mr. Church. Sorry, I got my, I got my speaker slips out of order here.
That's all right. You've confused me for someone of neutral repute, and I'm often recognized for a different element in society. My name's Phil Church. I'm a local resident. Chair and commissioners, I don't live too far down the road from this project on the same slope, so I'm really quite familiar with the natural topography and such. I did submit comments to the mitigated negative deck, and staff wrote me a report that it'll take me two more weeks to read, but I'm sure they covered all my questions. Mostly, I have some curiosity about some unusual aspects of this project that I'd like to know more to understand, and most of it has to do with the subject of my comments, which was stormwater flow and containment and management. And if I understood correctly, the private street won't actually be paved. It'll be like paver bricks of some type with a permeable surface to gather and store some of the flow of the groundwater, the stormwater. I thought I read in here, and I may have not understood at the introduction here, that rather than cement sidewalks, it was going to be decomposed, I think they called it a horse path, as in place of concrete sidewalks. And my speculation is that all of this is to qualify under the percentage of a hard surface or permeable surface and percentages for the project footprint based upon the projected and historic cubic feet per minute average rain, where's the water going to So being that it's an unusual street surface, that's an interesting way to, what appears to be a non-permeable project, to put some of the permeability back in the middle of it, interesting. Now, I wonder, because it's a, it's a private road, if in fact, in the approval or permitting that there would be entered in evidence somewhere that would prevent in five or 10 or 20 years someone deciding that those bricks need to be replaced, and rather than replace them, we'll just pave it?
Okay. I think I understand your concern.
Who keeps an eye on that?
Okay.
And the only other thing that I, that I wonder, being that it's private and CC and ours and such, that if there's going to be EDC trash collection and with no parking on the street because of vehicle, safety vehicle requirement, on Monday morning, both sides of the street are going to have big trash cans on them, and that's going to take away the extra.
Let me see if I can't get you some answers here, okay? Mr. Winters, the pavement's material surface, is that going to be permeable?
Yes, permeable pavers.
Okay. All right. And then, describe for us how the stormwater flow works.
This is probably the most complex stormwater project that I've brought before the commission, and I have the project engineer sitting behind me, but basically, I could read some sections from the MND. It's, just to summarize, it's a complex system of ribbon gutters, drainage between the lots, drainage to the street area. It includes underground piping and a modular wetland that would treat the water flow. Eventually, it works from the northwest, northeast corner of the site down to the southwest section of the site, where it would go through a riprap feature and into the natural drainage system. As with all projects, the proposed improvements, if I read from the response and the comments in the MND, improvements under post-development or post-construction conditions, including underground detention that would meet hydro-modification requirements, would reduce the flow rate to pre-development conditions, which is required by the city. That's kind of the case and the bottom line for all projects that are developed, for them to get to this stage and make it through the engineering division. For more detailed discussion on that, I'm sure Dave Lowen can fill us in.
Right. Answer your question, Mr. Church?
Well, it does, and I came to the same understanding after reading the same stuff. My concern is that?
The HOA is going to be responsible for maintaining all of that.
Well, and, and there's, were comments in the opening slides that stated that residents are going to be responsible for street maintenance and such, because it's a private street, and that certain restrictions on anybody building walls between the lots, because that'll change the flow and eb and such. And the ultimate thing down the road is enforcement.
Yes, and the city keeps an eye on it, and there's a condition of approval that requires them to maintain it, and if they don't, there are all kinds of things that happen after that. So the city, the city has enforcement power.
So I'm wondering, just in the wording of the, in the presented page that said the restriction on building walls is part of the CCs?
Yes.
If not adding any more hard surface to the project, including, that would include the road or permeable sidewalks, just in case someone comes in to apply for a permit down the road to put in a sidewalk or change the road surface, or an RV parking area on a little tiny bit of grass that's also part of the cumulative permeable surface, that nothing gets subtracted by mistake? I don't know what kind of wording might cover that, but that's my thought, and I appreciate your?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes? I want to clear up the sidewalk issue. Commissioner Garretson? I'm sorry. The sidewalk issue, I want to make sure it's clear that what was presented here today is that they would be, they would be concrete sidewalks, not DG sidewalks.
That's the amended condition of approval that staff's proposed tonight, yes.
That's what's being proposed, but I think Mr. Church was talking about his understanding that it would be DG, but that's not where we are at this point.
Right.
Okay. I just want to clear that up. Laura Vosa-Brown?
I brought my sister along for moral support, so.
Sure.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair. I want to read you a statement that we've written together.
Name and address for our record, please.
I'm sorry. I should back up. My name is Laura Vosa-Brown. Me, my sister, my brother own four lots directly west of it, and so we're the adjacent property owners.
Very good. Thank you.
We first want to make note for the city planning commission that there is actually an easement granted by the City of Vista Sanitation District in October of 1980, and along with that, surface improvement and site plans for the sewer main extension from South Santa Fe up into our property. And this was approved in July of 2004. It include plans for gravity flow sewer service to adjacent lots represented here, Henderson Land owned, Henderson Land Company owned. It provides, oh, there's also an agreement and letter of commitment between the previous owner, which was Allen and Associates, to share the responsibility of grading and improvements to the sewer main and main extension from South Santa Fe and graded road access. The grading of the service road has been substantially completed in 2007 and 2008, and the same agreement is available to, for consideration to the current owners. And we currently have drawings of our own for a tentative subdivision map for nine lots there as well. We'd also like to bring to attention the municipal code regarding sewer pump systems, and that at some point when you get 300, when you get a gravity flow sewer main within 300 feet of your house, you have to actually get rid of your pump station and connect to the sewer. So our concern is that some of those lots with those pump stations are going to be outdated as soon as our sewer's extension goes in. And I think that's about it. Do you have any questions, or do you need clarification? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, so.
No problem. So your three lots have an easement for sewer that goes down to South Santa Fe?
Yes, and it was approved.
Is it over this property?
No, it's adjacent, but it's right along the border. There's a little gully between them, and the sewer is on our property. There's a 20-foot easement.
Okay.
Granted.
All right.
Easily accessible by their lots.
Okay.
It was planned that way.
Yep. Understand. Okay. Any questions of Ms.? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do, I was just wondering if they're suggesting that it's a problem with this development? I wasn't sure what, what your point was.
I wasn't sure what, what your point was. Could you?
The point is that, that there's some synergy that we can create here in having, working both together on the sewer system that's, that's already been pre-planned. And by having them kind of one-off doing this pumping up to Alta Vista, which may be outdated as soon as our sewer goes in, it's, it's kind of a waste of funds if you look at it that way. It's more, makes more sense to actually put that money into co-developing and sharing the cost of doing the extension that was already approved.
So have you, have you approached the, Mr. Lowen about this?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question, because we found out pretty late about this. We knew of a previous owner, and we had worked with them. We thought the plans were dropped, we didn't know that they had been picked up again. So we were kind of rushing to get things through our people, our engineer and our lawyers too, to find out what our options were and kind of where this all, what we could do about it. And so that's why we sent a letter yesterday to be able to talk today.
So you're suggesting that if they don't do the pumping, that they work with you, they can go back to jointly sharing the piping?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I don't know if that's within our purview to, or is that something that the, would have to work out with the developer?
I think it's something that the two property owners need to sit down with the city and decide what the, the best way to sewer the two properties are.
Okay, thank you.
We've got, they've got the flexibility in the conditions of approval and in the city code to, to work out the best solution, I think.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, have a good night.
Laura Johnston? Lauren, I'm sorry.
Lauren Johnston, I'm at 2222 Alta Vista Drive, just about three lots to the, I guess it'd be about the east of the, the property. My concern, after watching this kind of develop, is the parking issue and the traffic issue. I understand there's a HOA going to be implemented on this property, and I know that HOAs are generally very, very restrictive on, on parking issues. Probably two-car garages, most houses have two, three, four cars. If the cars, if the HOA is forbidding cars be parked in the driveway or somewhere in the cul-de-sac overnight, where are these cars going to park? Are they going to park on Alta Vista Drive? And if so, that does then create kind of a, a safety issue for people that walk this, this street every morning and every evening. It's a very common street for, for, for walking. So I don't know how the HOAs are approved, if the city does it, if the developers do it, or it's a combined kind of agreement, but hope that the commission takes into consideration that safety issue, that the cars are being parked overnight, the aesthetics, the property values, and of course, the safety factor of people walking in the evening, nights, you know, coming, coming earlier, or in the morning, cars taking those turns. That property is located kind of on the top of a hill, going, I guess it would be north, like, kind of south or westbound-ish, down towards, it gets real windy. Going my direction, it kind of opens up, and cars do come very, very fast, often faster than the, the speed limit, which isn't posted, but it, since the road opens up, they do tend to, you know, get some speed going, and coming that direction at nighttime or in the morning, fog, cars parked, people, dogs. It's just, in my mind, it's a, a safety issue that needs to be addressed if the HOA doesn't have, you know, considerations for parking cars down on, on the property.
Okay.
And that being said, the speed limit, I don't know if, if the city would, would post speed limits or try and do something to, because with the additional traffic coming out of that property, the mornings and evenings, again, people tend to go pretty fast down those streets, and I know we do tend to, you know, depend on people's responsibilities, but there's nothing posted, there's nothing, there's no, what do they call them, those, the lines that help slow traffic down, or if there's any, any consideration for, for speed and pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Mouthful. Thank you.
Mr. Winters is with the, is there parking allowed on Alta Vista with the site distance for the drive, for the street coming up to Alta Vista?
It isn't easy to find parking on Alta Vista because of the narrowness of the road.
Right, okay. All right.
Does that mean it's illegal to park on Alta Vista, or it's hard to find a spot because of the curvature of the road, the width? But is it legal to park there on Alta Vista?
I would say it's difficult because of the curvature and the width, the condition of the slopes adjacent to the roadway. As far as legal, I'd probably have to defer to the director, the city attorney.
There are, excuse me, there, there are locations of the road that are widened, that allow parking, excuse me, but majority of the road is unimproved, so there's no legal parking along the unimproved portions unless there's a pullout that's improved enough to fit a car. We don't enforce no parking standards on Alta Vista Drive unless someone's in the travel lane, but there are locations you can park if you can find an area you can pull off the road.
Thank you. All right, and then our last speaker is Carol Jeffries. Good evening. Name and address, please, for our record.
My name's Carol Jeffries, I live at 2465 Alta Vista Drive.
Thank you.
If I had my druthers, this project wouldn't happen, because this is a major wildlife corridor. I know you guys don't really, aren't really in the business of housing animals, but they do live here. We have a lot of animals in our neighborhood, and most of them probably go to that valley, which is a valley, it would be very difficult to build there, there would be a lot of earth moving to make that a feasible project, and I think Mother Nature has other plans. We have a lot of coyotes, raccoons, skunks, you name it, and you're going to have a lot of dead animals on your shoulders if you allow this to go through. You know, we have a lot of, we have construction fatigue. I mean, you guys are like a rubber stamp committee instead of a planning commission. Everything that comes through, let's do it, let's do it. We're really sick of it here. We need a little moratorium, a little stay of execution so that we can get over this. This is just, it's too much, and if you live here, you know it. It's too much, we, we haven't even seen the impact of so much of the building that's going on. And I know this is a very small project, but it's too many houses for this lot, as you guys have, are already talking about. There's not enough room for parking, you're going to have flooding because it's a very steep slope. You know, the, and the owners of this lot have not been good neighbors, they have let the summer, the whole summer, there was, it was full of, not the whole summer, but when it, things got dry, there was all this mustard that is very volatile and very flammable just sitting there, and they had it, I walked by there every night with my son, we go walking. And they posted a notice, the city posted a notice that they have to take care of this within 30 days, and it was there for probably 60 days before it finally got mowed. So they're not good neighbors, sorry for whoever's involved, but that's my feeling. Planning, it's on your committee, it's, it means careful consideration, it means reviewing the future impact of projects, and I don't think that you're really thinking about the future. You're just thinking about this narrow little scope of this future cul-de-sac, and you're not thinking about the wider impact, and I can see you're glazing over already, but I'm mad, because I feel like you guys don't listen to the citizens, and you don't put it out there for people to have their say. And I'm here, but a lot of people, they don't know. Even people in my neighborhood don't know that this lot is eminently going to be developed. And there's been a sign there for 16-plus years saying it's going to be developed, so a lot of people are probably thinking it will never happen. I just, I feel like that, I'm not done, I feel like you just need to maybe have fewer, oh, thanks, maybe consider asking for fewer homes, because I don't think that it's right, and I think there needs to be a wildlife corridor through there. If this is going to happen, you need to have a place for the animals, because they're there.
Have, have you taken a look at the tentative map?
I was, I've been here. Does it have a wildlife corridor?
There is an area of exclusion where the oaks are.
Yeah, but how big is that? Is that enough for three and a half acres' worth of animals? It's not, you're...
So that, you're not satisfied with the...
I'm not satisfied. I think those lots are too small for our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is very eclectic, there are very big lots, and there are smaller lots, and there's houses of all kinds, and I think that it's, the lots are too small.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, that concludes the speaker's slips, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to discussion. Commissioner Garrettson, did I miss you, or?
No, that was from before, thank you.
Okay.
I do have concerns on the density, not so much with the, maybe the number of the houses, but the lack of space to park vehicles. If there is one last lot, and this goes into the bottom line, but if you've got nine homes, and you show up for a dinner party, there's no place to park. And I think that's problematic. I don't think that's the type of development we want to see anywhere in our city. But if accommodations could be made for some guest parking somewhere in the center of this development, I think it's going to end up being a much better, a much stronger project.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live on a private street that was much like this property, where there, we've got nine houses on the street, it's a private street. There is a, quote, an HOA for the street, which has me questioning, and I wrote myself a note, I got to go look at that. Mine was from the mid-1980s, my street. We have ample room on our street for street parking, but if someone does have a party, it creates, it does create an issue. On this project, there's no street parking, and there's no parking available on Alta Vista. And on my street with my nine houses on it, I am the only person who parks my cars in the garage. Everyone parks them in the driveways. So if you already have two cars and you have half of us over for a party, you're going to have to take a bus, because there will be no room in the driveways to even add four cars if you used your garage. So I agree with Commissioner Looney, some, something needs to be done, because this, this won't work. This is just going to make things worse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Grimm?
As I, excuse me, as I indicated earlier, I, I live in a situation like this, and our biggest, the board's biggest number of complaints are about, about parking in the fire lane. So I think there really is a problem here. I, I think Mr. Looney's solution is a good one, because by narrowing the street and not having parking, that allows more, probably the additional lot to be created. And so maybe the, the quid pro quo on that is to, is to remove the lot, one lot, and find a place for, you know, for, for some guest parking, so I think that was a good idea. In addition, and I'm not sure, Mr. Winters, if there is a condition on there already, I don't remember seeing one, that requires parking to occur in the garage for homeowners. That might be another option as, as well.
That isn't something that would be made obligatory on a private street development. We have done that with multifamily projects where we have that option. However, in this situation, the tract is meeting the code requirements. I don't know if, if a discussion needs to be, take place maybe at a policy level for more parking, or more parking specifically for tracts that don't have street parking. That might be a, something good to have it at some level, but I don't think there's anything that we have before us that we could compel the applicant to do. Be it an HOA, they could come up with those regulations voluntarily to provide for garage parking, but as it's designed right now, they meet the code requirements, and some of the lots exceed the code requirements.
And therefore, if the HOA put it on itself, it could remove it itself as well, so.
That's true, yeah, okay. All right. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Hastings?
I need a longer one.
Commissioner Hastings?
Thank you. I definitely agree about the parking. I have thoughts about things that the last speaker said. Speaking from the planning commission's perspective, I think, or my view here, is that we know that we need infill, because we know we need more places for people to live. So finding the balance between nature and humans, who should be part of nature, but is really difficult. I have a lot of sympathy for trying to find a way through this. That being said, I think the idea of one less house is a good one, so.
All right, so what's the commission's pleasure? There's been a discussion of one less house. Would you like to continue the project and have them come back with a redesign of eight houses? Or should we deny the project and let them appeal to the city council, and the council will have our input? How would you like to proceed? Commissioner Garrettson?
I, I would like to do just that. Let's delay the decision, because I don't think I could approve it with the parking conditions that exist now.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree with the concerns on the parking, but mostly because I live in an area where I don't have street parking, and I've had parties, and you make do. You, you, you deal with it, you plan for it, I understand the safety concerns. Beyond that, though, I think the bigger question is, let's hear from the applicant as to, is it feasible with eight lots versus nine? Is that a breaking point? Because at some point, it may not be. And if not, are there other options? Would they prefer to delay? Would they prefer to rework things? Maybe give them a minute to talk and figure that out before we take action.
I agree. So any other concerns besides parking on the project? Nope. It is 10,000-square-foot lot subdivision, otherwise it's pretty straightforward, it's what the neighborhood is developed in. Mr. Stone, do you have some advice for us?
We want the applicant to weigh in on the opportunity to continue the project and design the street differently.
Mr. Lund?
I'm back. So I, you know, I can appreciate everybody's concern, the owners do as well. The original design was for eight lots, and the, I had just a brief discussion with Mr. Conley about developing the property with a single-loaded street that's 32 feet wide. The road, the, the design right now is 24.
Right.
I just think that subtracting an additional eight feet along the lots from one through five exacerbates the, the slope condition for the driveways, and I just don't know if it, that, that that would work. So it's, it's worth considering using Lot Nine as a parking lot, as a, you know, where you could park, you know, perhaps four cars. We could look at that. So, so it would become... So, so it would become part of the, an HOA lot.
Okay.
And the, we'd have to utilize the existing level area that's shown. I don't think it would require us to go back to the drawing board, but my eyes aren't so good to see that up there. So the, the garage and the finished floor for the house on Lot Nine are at the same elevation. So that, that, and the driveway is under 4.5%. So it would allow us to perhaps come up with a, a workable design for some parking. Perhaps we can do a, where we recreate the berm or the curb over another 20 feet, and we do perpendicular parking. You know, perhaps four stalls along the edge of the road, if you follow what I'm saying.
So you would still have a home on Lot Nine plus, no, you'd give that, that up?
You'd have to.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, they're proposing to take Lot Nine and turn it into perpendicular parking.
But I'm, hopefully, I'm, I'm not putting myself in a box. I'm just saying that's an idea.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
One of the things that might be an option is to take either Lot Five or Six, where you have that steep drive. Keep the, keep the steep drive at 15%, but you might be able to accommodate four or five vehicles on that pad. I think Lot Nine, that's a nice lot. It's flat. I think it, it works well for a home. So what if we take that, again, Lot Six? Because I think it's just a, it's a ramp up to that parking area. Plus, the parking area is elevated. You're not gonna see it as much as if we have parking on Lot Nine.
Yeah, the, the only problem that I see with Lot Six is that, that 15% grade going up to the garage is still six feet below the pad level. So we, we would end up with another six-foot-high retaining wall to create a, a parking area. And I just...
But we've got six-foot walls there on Lot Six.
We're talking about an additional six-foot wall.
Yeah.
To create a parking area. And I just don't know that there's enough area to create proper turnaround where you can back out and then go back down the driveway to the, to the street. Lot Nine, while it's a, you know, it's a flat lot with a 4% grade up the driveway, has, I think it's much more attractive as far as if you're trying to park cars.
And there's options, there's alternates. Retaining walls get expensive.
Yes.
But we also have that transition. If you've got a 15% slope into a driveway, you've got that transition from that flat road over the sidewalk onto that 15% angle.
Well, it's, it's also possible. The, the retaining wall at the very back of Lot Six is six foot in height. We might be able to, you know, to drop that pad and create a, you know, try to get that driveway down to 10 or 12%.
Just look at options.
Right.
That's all that I think we're asking for. Thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson?
From before. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Grimm?
My, my point is just that we're kind of trying to design this from the dais, and we really need to kick it back to staff and maybe continue it to the next available Planning Commission meeting, if that's, if it can be worked out by then.
Okay. All right.
I, I don't think it's gonna change any of the drainage patterns or really affect the stormwater. If you eliminate the, the building on Lot Nine, you, and, and we go with pavers for the parking area, we've, we've increased the permeability of the site. So it's a question for the owners to make that decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Conley, if we continue this so you and the applicant can sit down and talk about parking on this street, should we continue it to a date certain, or do you want to re-advertise?
Next, excuse me, next available meeting is the 17th of December. So as long as the applicant thinks it can be done by then, which he's indicating it can, so we'll go ahead and continue it to the 17th, if that's okay.
Very good. Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just ask that the Planning Commission give some clear guidance to the applicant and say, is four spaces enough? If they come back and say, we've deleted Lot Nine, there's now four spaces, is that adequate for the applicant? Or are we still concerned about the number of parking? I just, I don't want them to come back a month from now and have us be upset again at the lack of parking. So maybe, we don't have to come to an agreement on the record, but just give some indication whether that's gonna be adequate.
I, good point. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personally, I do not think four spaces is enough. Eight spaces may be enough, but I don't think four is gonna buy us a whole lot. My personal opinion.
Would you, would you support a continuance to December 17th to see if staff and, and the applicant can work out some additional parking on the project? Okay? Rest of the commission? All right. So can I hear a motion to continue the project to December 17th for the applicant and city staff to sit down and work out additional parking? At least four spaces, maybe eight as a goal, and see where they come back? Commissioner Grimm?
Move as stated by the chairman. Move as stated by the chairman.
All right. It's been moved to continue to seven, to December 2nd, 17th. Excuse me. Commissioner Looney?
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's been seconded. Commissioner, you're fine? All right. And please cast your vote. And that motion passes unanimously. So we will see you again on December 17th with additional parking. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioners, moving along to item two. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Mr. Conley, your staff report, please, on Solutions for Change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is an application by Solutions for Change for a campus expansion, which includes a site development plan with a density bonus, a special use permit, and a tentative parcel map. The site location is shown on the overhead here as soon as we get this slideshow set up. There we go. Thank you. All right. It's at the southwest corner of West California Ave and West Los Angeles Drive, as shown in the overhead here. It's the parcels that are encircled with the yellow dotted line. West Los Angeles is to the north. It intersects with West California in the northeast corner of the project site. And West California runs along the eastern boundary of the property. It includes seven existing parcels, two on West Los Angeles Drive and five on West California Avenue, which are all noted here and included in the staff report as well as a description of the uses on those parcels. The total project site is 3.45 acres. Surrounding uses are shown here. It's primarily a mix of single and multifamily residential, primarily single-family residential to the north, predominantly to the east with some multifamily. To the south and west are a mix of multifamily and single-family. The railroad tracks you can see there to the west of the site separate that from a single-family residential neighborhood and a commercial area to the northwest. The property at 722 West California is the existing solutions facility. There's 33 existing dwelling units within the facility as well as a multipurpose facility and offices that they are currently operating within. Those buildings and the associated parking will remain and be protected in place. And the remainder of the property that's shown in orange here will be redeveloped with the uses that are proposed. So all of the existing structure shown in orange would be demolished to make way for the improvements that are proposed as part of the project. The general plan on the subject site is medium-high-density residential, which allows for multifamily or single-family residential up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The zoning is comparably multifamily residential, RM15, which again allows 15 units to the acre max, also allows up to two stories or 35-foot height limit. Solutions for Change proposal includes a site development plan with density bonus to build two new three-story buildings with 36 attached residential units. That would be 18 in each of the two buildings. A 12,000-square-foot empowerment center, parking amenities and landscaping associated with the development. They're proposing a special use permit that would include a 60-bed emergency homeless shelter within the empowerment center building and a tentative parcel map to consolidate the seven existing parcels into two. They're also proposing a density bonus, as mentioned, which is allowed under state law as well as the City of Vista's ordinance. They can increase their project density up to 35% above the density allowed by the general plan if they include up to 20% low-income units or 11% very-low-income units in their project. This project includes both very-low and low-income units, and so it qualifies for the 35% density bonus. Under the state law, parking can be limited to a half a space per bedroom at this particular location because it's within a half-mile of transit. And so that's afforded by right. And there are three additional concessions allowed. A concession is defined as the ability to waive a development standard. So in this case, they are asking for two of the three concessions. One is the building height to exceed the two-story height up to a three-story height. The second is a setback concession to waive the side setback along West Los Angeles Drive, which would normally be 15 feet, and reduce that to 10 feet. That's summarized in the staff report as well. The project also proposes a density of up to 35% increase or equates to about 20 units per acre within the particular location. They're proposing 109 parking spaces, which equates to about 0.7 spaces per bedroom. And the two concessions I mentioned are the side setback and the building height. I'll cover the parking a little more thoroughly. This is the site plan. The two residential buildings are located up in the northern central portion of the site along West Los Angeles Drive. They're shown in orange here. They would include 18 units with a mix of two- and three-story bedrooms in each of the buildings for a total of 36 units. The empowerment center would be located to the east of the residential buildings along West California Avenue. That would be a two-story, two-story structure. It would include the emergency shelter as well as offices, classrooms, and support services for the shelter. There are expanded parking areas located throughout the site. These add to the existing parking that's already located on the site to meet the parking standards for the overall project site. And finally, there are a number of amenities which are located in the central portion of the site to serve both the existing and proposed residential units. The site plan shown here, it's included in your packet. Just for informational purposes, it's shown here, which highlights the parking expansions, the building locations, and the improvements that are proposed on site. The parking, as I mentioned, there's 33 existing units. They're all two-bedroom units. There's 42 existing parking spaces on the site. There are 36 proposed new units, which would be 18 two-bedroom and 18 three-bedroom. So with a total of 69 dwelling units, there'd be 156 bedrooms on the site. As I mentioned, the density bonus permits a half a space per bedroom, which equates to 78 spaces. They're providing 109. So that's 31 spaces above what would be required for the residential units. In our code, emergency shelters typically require one space per three beds. That would be an additional 20 spaces. So calculating out what they would require would be 98 spaces. And so they're showing 11 spaces beyond what's required by our code. As shown on the right, the 98 spaces would be located in the southerly portion of the site, adjacent to their existing facilities. And there's a small 11-space parking lot that would be located in the northeast corner of the project. The landscape plan is shown here. The existing landscaping would remain in place, and all of the newly-developed portions of the site would be landscaped. It would equate to a little over 28,000 square feet or 27% of the site. The city's requirement is for 15% of the site to be landscaped and that it use non-native, I'm sorry, native, non-drought-tolerant plant materials, which is included in the project. There are also a couple of play areas for different age groups, an amphitheater, turf area, and a barbecue and seating area for the residents as amenities for the project. The floor plans are shown here. They're pretty typical. First, second, and third floors pretty well matched. This was for Building A. There's two sets of floor plans included in the drawings. The two-bedroom unit would be about 716 square feet. And the three-bedroom unit would be about 906 square feet. And those are pretty consistent throughout the project. This is the empowerment center floor plan. On the left is the first floor, which would include the shelter beds and the larger space, some offices and classrooms to the south there. And the second floor would include a deck as well as office and classroom and support services for the shelter as well as for the residents of the facility. The residential buildings would be three-story structures, just under 34 feet in height. They include a contemporary design. They have varying roof elevations, stucco exteriors, enhancements with tile, metal railings, window canopies, stone accents. And they'll maintain an earth-tone color scheme. The elevations of one of the residential buildings is included here to give you architectural perspective. And the empowerment center is shown here. Again, the same general mix of colors and materials to integrate the buildings. And these are the street elevations. On the top is what you would see from West Los Angeles Drive with the residential buildings. On the right, up a little closer to the street, and the empowerment center on the left pushed back, which would be located behind the parking lot. And from West California Avenue, you would see primarily the empowerment center, which is on the left, and the residential buildings set back. The general plan for the site, as I mentioned, is medium-high-density. There are 69 units proposed on the 3.45-acre site, which equates to 20 units per the acre, which is permitted with a 35% density bonus. The building height, again, is a density bonus concession. The parking, again, is a density bonus concession, but they do exceed the parking required and provide 109 spaces. They meet the open space requirements on the site with the amenities provided and the landscaping, as I mentioned. Setbacks are met. And the front on California is 50 feet from the center line. There's a variation on the side of West Los Angeles from 15 to 10 as a density bonus concession. And the remainder of the site setbacks are met. The special use permit limits the emergency shelter to 60 beds. Solutions for Change has extensive eligibility requirements for the families that they serve within the shelter, which are incorporated into the conditions of approval by reference and were provided as part of the staff report. And the solutions folks are here to get into details about those if you'd like to discuss them. But those are all incorporated into the conditions to try to make sure that those eligibility requirements stay with the shelter. There's also specific conditions of approval, which are listed in the staff report in staff's attempt to really try to minimize any negative impacts from the shelter, including management staff with experience locally, security personnel, loitering and trespassing enforcement, trash pickup and maintenance, and a management plan requirement. The project came before the commission for early design review in March of this year. The primary issue was architecture. The developers made significant changes to the architecture, as I've mentioned. I'll show you an elevation next that compares the earlier architecture to what's proposed. There was some discussion about the distance between the two residential buildings and creating a canyon effect. And they've widened and pulled the buildings apart to reduce that. They've changed the roof lines to address the variation in roofs. And the last issue was a public notice being translated into Spanish, which it was provided a couple of weeks ago when the notice went out. This is an elevation that compares what was submitted originally. At the top is the EDR elevation. This is the view from West Los Angeles Drive looking south into the site. The residential building on the right, the empowerment center on the left. If you remember, the commission had a lot of concerns about the blank roof lines and the plain facades. And you can see there's a significant difference in the revised architectural elevations elevations that are provided. So based on that, staff is recommending adopting a resolution that would approve a special use permit, a site development plan with density bonus, and a tentative parcel map for the project as submitted. And I'm available for any additional questions. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions to Mr. Conley? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Conley, on the setbacks for West Los Angeles only, not the project site, but the other portions of West Los Angeles, what are the setbacks over on that side, further down, I guess?
So you're referring to the buildings to the west?
Correct.
So if this thing works, yeah, these properties here?
Mm-hmm.
So the setback in the code for front setback, which these buildings are probably measuring front setback, is 50 feet from the center line of the street, which is typically 20 feet from the front property line, and they look like they meet that standard. The buildings on this property, which would be the two residential buildings, would be there'd be a five-foot additional dedication, so that's not included in the setback, and then a 10-foot setback.
So is that going to cause a distance when you're driving down the street, you're going to see some Solutions for Change buildings basically almost on the street compared to neighboring properties?
The Solutions building will be significantly closer to the street than the neighboring properties, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Garretson?
That was my question.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
John, could you define the conditions for an emergency shelter? What conditions does Solutions have to allow someone to come into that facility?
Like the eligibility requirements that they would need to meet? Yeah, so there is a handout that's included in the staff report that goes through what requirements have to be met for a typical entrance into their facility, which is it's the last attachment. It's on page 65 of 68, but it's got a list of the requirements that you would need to participate in their program. Generally, they're a family shelter, so they don't accept, my understanding is, they don't accept single males or singles in general, it's families with certain needs, but I'm not going to try to answer that question. I'm going to defer to the Solutions folks who are here to give you some real details, if that's okay about...
It's here. Just go ahead and read it.
Okay.
So they don't have to present it. But thank you.
So the representatives from Solutions for Change are here?
Yes, Mr. Meggason is here, I believe, as well as Mr. Leach.
Name an address, please.
Good evening. I'm Chris Meggason. I used to reside in Vista for 30 years, but now I've recently moved to 797 Greyhawk Court in Oceanside.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I suppose you're here to answer questions, so tell us about Solutions for Change, and I want to know about Solutions University in particular.
Sure. Founded it 20 years ago after running a winter shelter right across the street here at the church. We noticed a lot of families coming in, and as you probably have heard, the whole impetus of Solutions was one night, a nine-year-old girl yanked on my sleeve really hard, and she asked me in a very innocent voice, "Hey, mister, do you live here too?" And I was there with my wife helping out with my two boys, and I got down on one knee, and I said, "You know what, sweetheart? I don't live in this place, but I'm going to make you a promise. We're going to get you out of here and get you back into a home." She teared up. I'd be lying to you if this old marine didn't tear up, and we gave each other a hug, and in that moment, that girl launched what today really is a movement here for. We've let over 2,500 children and about 1,100 families out of this horrible condition of family homelessness, not for six months or a year, but permanently. And so that's what our program is designed to do. We noticed back then that the system was really woefully inadequate to deal with the root causes of homelessness. What are those root causes? It's deep poverty. It could be multi-generational poverty, which we do see here quite a bit in this area. It can be mental health issues, addiction issues, a lot of really tough issues. And so what oftentimes happens in the system is we're very compassionate. We want to feed people and shelter them and give them services, but they don't address the root cause. So that, to your question, Mr. Chairman, we designed a personal development academy. It's 1,000 days. And so in that academy, frankly, the place you live is important, but it's less important than the experience that you get as a result of going through this really deep transformational type of academy that is literally helping people address root causes, get jobs. We think work is therapeutic, and we need people to get to work and keep the job. And so in order to do that, we have to help people solve these really tough issues, which they do. And so they address their core issues, they get and keep jobs. By getting and keeping jobs, they can get out of homelessness, get into homes, and permanently end their homelessness. And we do that in a way that has got a lot of attention here. You just heard just a few days ago, we had people from the Washington DC area in. The gentleman that runs welfare for the entire country found out about us two years ago. They vetted us, and they have asked us to do a national initiative to prove our model, so there'll be rigorous third-party evidence following us for the next three years. If we can prove that, then they're going to scale it around the country, and that has been a really humbling and very significant thing, not just for me, the people of Vista did this, right? So all the relationships with all the churches and all the people here. Our city is amazing. We have so many people that have got us to this point. So we're excited to be here because this expansion effort, in addition to years ago, I'd say, "I got to buy this house here because I'm sick of all the drug deals going on here." So I just like, "Can you let me buy it? Can you let me buy it? No, go away." Finally, yeah, sure, buy it. Third one we bought had a meth lab in the garage. And so we're excited. We feel that this is our opportunity here to help more families. We have a homeless crisis, as you know. It's all through the news. So I'm fortunate to be a partner with this gentleman here. He is the expert with building. I'm just the guy that runs around saying, "Hey, let's solve more family homelessness and transform lives for kids." So thank you for the opportunity here to be here with you folks tonight, and we're looking forward to delivering something that not only this Vista community can be proud of, but we absolutely know, based on what we've been told by people that are doing this stuff at a much higher level than where we're at, that this is a gem, really, for the entire region and for the country. So we're excited about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is William Leach. I live in Riverside, but I am the Director of Real Estate Development for Solutions for Change, and I'd like to highlight a few key components of the development. Number one, this is an opportunity to attract over $30 million of investment from the state and county and the federal government into this project and into this community. Also involved in the project is street widening, undergrounding of utilities, improving of the intersection, and so there's over $1 million of public works to be achieved and improved. At the March Commission meeting, one of the residents raised a concern about the road bottlenecking at that location. That condition will be relieved as the entire street will remain at the appropriate width. And we're just real excited about the change in people's lives, as Chris mentioned. I kind of want to highlight the 12,000-square-foot empowerment center. Will take us from an 8,000-square-foot facility to now have 20,000 square feet for classrooms, job training. Will have a full-service kitchen for people to learn how to be frontline cooks and waiters and waitresses. And so Solutions has a commitment to make life transformations, and this is a wonderful opportunity to expand that campus and expand that impact. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Grimm?
Yeah, just a real small question. On the property line that runs down kind of the upper center, I think there's a 42 or 47 or something on that. I don't know, John, if maybe you could point that out. Yeah, that line right there. I was just wondering, again, this is a small item, but a lot of times when you have multiple family-type development, you want a solid fence that runs or something that separates that, you know, in multiple family, that kind of limits visibility. I noticed you guys have a wrought iron, I think, that runs through there, which is aesthetically more pleasing and probably more expensive. I'm just wondering if you thought about any need for a solid fence running through that
As it is, I believe the property is not gated, and I think the plan was to continue to have it not gated. And the, so at present, it has not been considered. It's not that we were unwilling to. It's just the feel and the openness has been the primary goal.
Sure. And I'm not proposing a condition or anything. I just wondered if you considered that.
Super. Between you and Mr. Conley, you run other campuses in the city. Is that correct? And have we had any code enforcement, police activity?
Solutions operates an existing shelter on East Vista Way. They have since around 2000.
Right.
We've had no reports of problems there from code.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? Commissioner Bill, one more?
Mr. Conley, excuse me. I think recently the Commission recommended or approved the emergency shelter change to one of the city's codes.
Yes.
And assuming that is approved by the city council or has been, and assuming this goes through, would this fill that gap of the emergency shelter for the City of Vista?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Within this zone. That's correct.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I have two speaker slips for this project.
My name's Anita Herman. I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse.
Hold the mic towards you just a little bit.
My name's Anita Herman.
Very good.
I live on Cae Eligante. I'm the very last home at 493, closest to Solutions for Change at the very end of cul-de-sac. And I've lived there for 11 years. Solutions for Change has come in and bought the drug houses up at the corner, which is I didn't know that they were proposing a three-story building towards Los Angeles, and that's going to look very out of place in our neighborhood. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just a little strange. Our street is very narrow on Los Angeles and also on Los Angeles Drive, and the traffic is already bad. I'm glad that they've, you know, added additional parking, which is sorely needed. I live on a private street, such as your previous person that was up here, and parking is a huge issue. There is no parking on West California Avenue available. If you get home from work one minute after 5:00, you cannot find a place to park during the day is fine, but at night, mm-mm, there's no way. We have the same issue on our street where we do have parking. But my concern is for the additional traffic that's going to be on the street. My personal concern is also for my own property value, whether my property value will decline. Because of this, I'm not in favor of the emergency shelter in my neighborhood. I think Solutions for Change does a phenomenal job. I've lived there for 11 years. I haven't had any issues with Solutions for Change. However, I'm not in favor at all of the emergency shelter in this neighborhood. They've taken the neighborhood and turned it into, from what I can see so far, has been a positive spin because it was bad. And then I want to know, are they paying for all of the street improvements that are going to be required, all of them?
Yes.
Is the street going to be widened on Los Angeles and on...
Just along the yellow area shown, but in front of their project.
Well, Los Angeles is here and West California, right?
Right. The areas that are yellow that are fronting the street would be widened by the project.
Okay. Is there going to be sidewalks on the yellow side of the street there where your line is sidewalks, and is there going to be parking along there?
Yes.
Because right now, there's not. We all know that.
Yes, there will be sidewalks and parking.
That's about all I have right now. The transit may be a half a mile away, but walking-wise, I can tell you because my son walks it from where we live, is almost a mile because you cannot go...
It's actually, the way we measure it is to the bus stop on Melrose because that's a transit stop under the state law.
Oh, really? Okay. Not to the Vista Transit Center then. I'm like... And then the other thing was, they're going to be three-story, not two?
That's allowed under the state's law, yeah, for density bonus. That's correct. Just the two residential buildings.
But it's less than, our ordinance is two stories are 35 feet. They're going to be three stories under 35 feet.
Under 35 feet, okay.
So they're somewhat within our code.
And what type of traffic are we going to have when there's construction's going on in our neighborhood? And for how long?
Construction will probably last about nine months to a year, I'm going to guess, and you will have some construction traffic from the project. I mean, it probably is not going to be significant, but you may have 30, 40 workers a day coming in and out of the site.
Because where we live right here, it doesn't show it very well on the map, but the curve on West Los Angeles, just past Solutions for Change, is a very, is a lot sharper than what it shows on the map. So when people come driving down here, excuse me, just pulling out of our street is an issue to make a left or even a right, even though we have red, no parking zones, people park there anyway, and it makes it really difficult to see, excuse me, going in and out of there. Are there going to be construction people there to help, you know, with the traffic so that we can actually get in and out of our own communities?
Usually, in a construction project like this, construction traffic is managed. They have to provide a plan on how things are going to be done, and so they don't impact the neighborhood, so...
And how is my property value going to be affected by this?
I have no idea.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I said, "How is my property value going to be affected by this in this community?"
It's no, it's impossible to tell you that tonight. It's going to be a significant improvement. The drug houses are gone. The place is going to look nicer than it does now. So in my experience in these types of things, it's the management of the project that affects the quality of life, and I think Solutions for Change has demonstrated that they manage their projects very effectively. So my personal opinion is I don't think it's going to be, it will affect your property value because they do a good job in maintaining their properties. But again, that's just one man's opinion here, so...
Thanks for your time. That remains to be seen, but...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Tyler Parter?
Hi, good evening. My name is Tyler Parthomer. I live on West California Avenue, right across the street from the proposed project. And it was really interesting to hear more about Solutions for Change tonight. I'm a community engagement manager for a nonprofit that serves women veterans here in San Diego County, so it's always great to increase my nonprofit circle. My concern is about the environmental report. I read in the agenda tonight that it's been determined that this project is exempt from environmental review in accordance with the guideline section 15, 332. And so I looked that up, and one of those conditions is approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality. And so as far as that goes, I just wanted to voice some concerns that I think this will cause some significant traffic concerns through the project. As the last resident mentioned, it can get pretty crowded. That area, I've seen on a daily basis, the sheriff's office uses a pass-through between Melrose North and Santa Fe, and so there's buses every day, there's the Vista Boys and Girls Club that's right up the street. I watch kids as young as five, as old as 17 or 18, walking to school every day. old as 17 or 18, walking to school every day. The side of the street now that doesn't have a sidewalk, they walk on that side. And so I don't think that construction or something like that is really going to defer a 13-year-old that's got AirPods in from crossing the street and finding a safer route to school. So just concerns that I had that I would love to be able to see in some sort of report before this continues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jennifer Panckley?
Hi, good evening. I wasn't going to say anything, I wasn't going to speak, but I felt motivated by the resident speakers to clarify. A lot of times when we hear emergency shelter beds, we think of what we see in the media, and we imagine old men with, you know, brown paper bags and things like that. And I want to encourage you that we definitely take families and we require them to be clean and sober. I manage our existing intake and access center, shelter, emergency shelter, and we are, we have such strict guidelines. I used to live there. I'm actually a graduate of the program. I graduated like seven years ago. So when we typically think about homeless people, we don't, you know, we have an image in our head and what we think that that is going to look like. Those residents are up at 5:30 every morning. They're feeding their kids, they're getting their kids to school, they're going, they're going to participate in our classes, they're going to work training. I mean, there is not a dull moment in their lives from when they wake up to when they go to sleep. They definitely don't loiter, they're not hanging around, you know, not doing anything. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we say emergency shelter, we kind of were like, oh, gosh. But no, it's a really amazing thing for the community and for the families of Vista. And it's going to be a beautiful project, hopefully. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our speaker slip, so I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Conley, let me come back again about the setbacks on West Los Angeles. Did we, is the concession for the setbacks in order to create the space, the canyon between the two buildings?
I believe so. They were, the applicant had a tighter spacing of the two buildings when they initially came in. They still had a close setback, but in an earlier version of the plan, they had to dedicate more width on the street. We went back and revisited that and allowed them a lesser dedication, but they still have the buildings located 10 feet from the street, so. Excuse me, we can ask the civil if he wants to comment on what's driving that, but that's just based on what we've been given.
Is he here?
I believe so. Yeah, the civil engineer for the project. Could fill us in on why the building is close to the street on West Los Angeles in the site plan? Pull it back here.
Give us your name while he's doing that.
My name is Reed Kunishege, civil engineering consultant.
So you'll notice in the site plan, it's probably the best one. On the top here is West Los Angeles Drive. The setback here is what Commissioner Kramer's referring to. There's a 10-foot setback there, so I guess she's just asking what's driving that being so close to the street? Is there any ability to pull it back?
Part of it that's driving it is the amenities area. And the first submittal, we had those buildings closer together. And the actual building location was coordinated with the architect. So, which is not present this evening. But as far as the setback, we actually wanted to hold the minimum on West Los Angeles. And, but with that additional five, five foot that was dedicated, we had the amenities area set, and we, the architect managed to make the buildings wider and try to keep everything in place, basically.
I'd also like to add one constraint that besides the somewhat late in the process of the dedication getting larger and the goal to make the canyon effect go away, the third constraint was the fire access. So the bottom-left corner of the lower building needs to be within 150 feet of where the fire truck will stop. And so that corner, we can't just push it down into the open space because then it won't be 150 feet from where the fire truck comes in, in the upper blue area, nor will it be 150 feet from the street. And so those are the two angles that we need to fight that fire from. So that stops us from pulling the building further down.
Thank you. I understand, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. The Fire Department has put just wonderful regulations on all development, and it's a 150-foot hose pole. They've got to be able to encompass that building with two 150-foot hoses from where they park the truck. I wanted to compliment the Nado Associates for really being attentive to what was said for the early design review. A world of difference in exterior elevations from what was initially submitted. Initially, we had a box. Now we've got architecture. And so I think you paid, you did a great job in listening and being creative in some boxy buildings. So, but thank you.
Commissioner Bill?
Just echoing Commissioner Looney's comments, well done on the redesign. I think that despite the lesser setbacks even, this strikes me much more as a modern school or some kind of public building that, it certainly doesn't stand out the way the original design did as noticeable in a negative way. I really, really like the accents and the design that the Nado did here, so, well done.
Commissioner Grimm?
As one of the speakers, I had concerns when I first saw this about the location of the empowerment center because it's located right on the street. And I had talked to staff about it and also took a good look at the plan. And I don't know, Mr. Conley, if you have a picture that blows that area up a little bit at all, but basically, it's all been turned around so that the entrance to the empowerment center is not on the street, it's actually from the interior of the project. And I think that's a huge consideration because anybody that's entering that or wants to be a part of it has to come into the campus there and, because they can't get access from the street. So I think it was a really good design.
Very good. I too appreciate the change from the early design review to the current proposal. I think you've got, as mentioned, you did a good job of listening to us and amending the project to reflect our, address our concerns. So commissioners, what's your pleasure? Is it time for a resolution or a motion? Commissioner Garretson?
I would move to approve P. 190102 as presented with a comment that I view this project as addition by subtraction. You've really improved the neighborhood by getting rid of some things, and it's addition by addition that would really added some real value to that area. And congratulations on the product that is before us tonight compared to what we saw before.
Commissioner Kramer?
I wholeheartedly second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and second to approve the project. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right. Commissioners, before we go, we've been at this an hour and 40 minutes, so let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish up. And we're back. Mr. Winters, thank you very much for taking care of the Rancho students. So commissioners, we're moving on now to our last public hearing. We still have work to do. Thank you, Chris. All right, Mr. Conley, your staff report on the amendment to the business, the Vista Development Code for the Vista Business Specific Plan, Business Park Specific Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is a zoning amendment for cannabis-related uses. Prior to 2018, the city prohibited all cannabis-related land uses. In 2018, sorry, that's a typo, Measure Z was approved by the voters, which legalized up to 11 medical dispensaries in certain commercial and industrial zones within the city, and implementing ordinances were adopted in 2018 for Measure Z based on the requirements that were included in the initiative. The city then established a one-year moratorium exclusive of medical dispensaries to allow for a study period of other cannabis-related land uses. The city council subsequently held multiple discussions on this item in December, June, and August in this past year. On August 27, the city council gave us direction to allow the following additional uses within the Vista Business Park Specific Plan in Use Area B. An unlimited amount of cannabis testing facilities, up to two cannabis manufacturing facilities with a special use permit, and up to two cannabis distribution facilities with a special use permit. And so the staff has written an ordinance that allows for these changes, which is included as Exhibit 1B in your staff report. The Vista Business Park Specific Plan is shown here. Area B is all of the white area, which is the majority of the plan. It's all of the industrial areas that are zoned for research light industrial use. So majority of the big box industrial portion of the plan. The areas that are residential over to the west there noted as Area E, as well as some commercial uses in Area C and the Home Depot in Area F. None of those would be affected, nor would the Target or the commercials areas A or the open space areas D. So all of the white, but any of the other designations would be excluded from this provision. Staff is also recommending amendments to Chapters 1802, which is definitions, and 1806, which is establishment of zones in the Development Code, to continue the prohibition on other cannabis-related uses, with the exception of those allowed by Measure Z in the amendment that's before you tonight. Those changes include definitions, which are added, amended, and deleted as needed, as well as clarification of cannabis-related uses that are continued to be prohibited. And there's an ordinance included in the staff report as Exhibit 1A, which includes those changes for your review.
That's exactly correct. It would test for the content, the chemical content. It would test for, you know, molds or all sorts of pollutants, and to make sure that the cannabis met the standards that was, is required before it can be put into the distribution system. So this is a requirement before any cannabis is able to be distributed in any manner.
Okay, super. Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, excuse me for butting in, but it's your turn.
A couple of questions. One is the map that you had up of the Vista Business Park Specific Plan. Is there any reason why they included all of the area and didn't exclude areas right next to the houses? And could this commission, if the commission were, so chose to do so, exclude areas closest to those houses as a recommendation?
So the decision is at the council level, but the commission's recommendation could certainly include any details like that, yes?
Because basically, the way this is right now, across the street from these houses, you could have testing, distribution, and manufacturing.
Yes.
Okay. Just, excuse me, let me just add, that's true what you said. There is also for the manufacturing and for the distribution a special use permit requirement. So in each instance, those uses would be presented to the planning commission before any approval be allowed. But in theory, if the planning commission were to approve the uses adjacent to the residences, that would be a possibility because there is no prohibition on that in the zoning code.
But this commission could recommend to the city council that they short-circuit that and say, none of that within a certain period. Let's say worst extreme is from Business Park West. There should be no, none of this. Because you have houses up on South Melrose, just north of this, that are 300 feet, 600 feet away. So that's...
You could include a distance requirement from residential. That would be typical of some other zoning limitations. I'd not recommend including a whole area like Business Park West, because that's a significant portion of the park, but maybe it's 300 feet from residences or something like that.
Something to protect those residents from having that close to it, to them.
Sure.
All right. Second question. What could be manufactured and distributed from here? It could be any, anything CBD, marijuana, whether it be medical or recreational marijuana could be manufactured and distributed from here?
Yes, there's no limitation on the types of products, whether it be medical only or recreational. It could be any type of product that's cannabis-related that they manufacture on site: oils, foods, whatever.
I just want to get that on the record, that we're not talking about just medical marijuana. And my final question relates to testing of, even CBD has some marijuana in it. Law allows a certain percentage, but there is no way, let's say for the police, if they smell it, to check it. There is no way for them to check it. So somebody says, I got CBD, that's why you smell marijuana. The police, sheriffs, have no way of checking it as we speak, correct?
Oh, they do have their own testing facilities if they choose to send them to them, but the ordinance that's proposed would allow them within the business park, so it might be more proximate to the sheriff's department and Vista. They have testing facilities, though, that they can go to down in San Diego. Sheriff's Department does.
That they could go to San Diego, but...
So they have their own testing contracts that they use to test for all those things when they have an arrest and they have, you know, evidence that they have to test. But for the purposes of the zoning code amendment, these testing companies would open up and they would just contract to whether it's purchasers or whether it's law enforcement, whoever wants to test product, they could test.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bell?
Thanks. Just a couple of clarifications. So distribution excludes retail sales. There's no direct retail sales from anything we're discussing within this amendment.
That's correct.
So this is purely business-to-business, somewhere in the chain of distribution, coming from growth manufacturer, whatever it is, then leading to one of the other many retail locations that we've dealt with in Prop Z and are a separate entity. But we're not talking within this map about any retail sales.
That's correct.
Okay. And then any evidence of emissions or runoff or any kind of nuisance from cannabis manufacturer, testing, or distribution that we're aware of that would make them a unique circumstance compared to, that isn't already covered by another restriction on chemical manufacturing or something other in the same industrial, or beer, or hops, or, you know, something else?
Yeah, they're regulated by the state for all those things. So the manufacturing component could have some hazardous components, but it's all regulated under our normal, our existing codes.
And then no allowance for any kind of tasting room, sampling, anything like that?
No.
You laugh, but this is a thing. And so just making sure this is not allowed...
I should be clear...
Because we have beer tasting rooms, right? So I just want to make sure it's not the same.
That's, that's correct. I should be clear that the Prop, Measure Z, did allow medical storefronts which can locate in the business park, and there are a couple that are moving forward in the business park. That's exclusive of what you're hearing tonight.
Right.
Tonight is specifically for new uses, and no, none of those uses would have the ability to test any product for the public.
Okay. And then, final question was, no, I don't think that's most what I had. No, that's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions were answered by Commissioner Bell's questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, and he answered my question about that there can be distribution as a part of those 11 in this area. So you could conceivably have manufacturer, testing, and distribution, and retail. Yes, it could be one of the 11.
But what I'm saying is, this ordinance does not cover retail.
Where's your mic?
I guess, I guess the, my understanding is that absolutely separately from what we're discussing tonight, there can be some level of retail allowed for under whatever law exists in Vista, within this zone, as long as it matches away from schools, away from homes, whatever industrial allowance is there. But the issue we're looking at tonight is the allowance of distribution, testing, and production, manufacturing, that is separate and apart from any kind of retail or sale. So by approving this, we're not allowing for storefronts either way. This doesn't have anything to do with storefronts.
No, but I think the fact that you can have storefronts there should impact our decision.
So if you're going to have a request for a distribution or manufacturing facility, it would require a use permit. You would have a specific location. We'd be able to define where the storefronts are with relation to the proposal, and that could be part of your consideration.
And the fact that any special use permit would come before the commission makes me feel good about, if it pops up in one zone near the Home Depot, we can say no if in that specific instance, we think it's too close to a community. And I just tend to be on the side of not blanketing restrictions, but when we still have the control over the decisions in the future, allowing those to come before the commission and the decision to be made on the spot there, so. But I get the concern over not allowing too much retail if not needed, so that's all.
I'm, I'm sorry. My initial reaction, thank you, Commissioner Hastings for saving me.
I just have an initial reaction. One of the things we have to remember about retail establishments is that they don't need to get their product from these distributors. They could get their stuff from anywhere. So there's some distinctions about distribution that have to be kind of set aside here. They're just, they're using our business park for their business, which... Also, I wasn't clear, Commissioner Garretson, about your concern about products with CBD and the fact that they may, might have some THC left in them, and that THC has the specific marijuana odor to it that would cause an issue?
I've read recently in New York City, some legal businesses being shut down because they were distributing legal CBD. The police stopped them through a warning of some sort. They smelled marijuana, and anyway, long story short, the person was arrested, and they didn't have, with the police, the ability to check it. And this went on for a long time, and the business actually ended up getting shut down. I just wanted to put it on the record that it's not like, you know, we can detect it just by smelling it.
But you're talking about a retail sale in that circumstance. You used the word "distribution," but that's a retail sale. We're talking about distribution as defined by the code, which is separate and apart from retail sales. No jars of CBD oil being sold to consumers walking in and out. You're not wrong, I'm just making sure.
In, in any of these things, you're correct, but they could have them within this zone.
Student Commissioners, any comments?
Do you dare?
I'll give you a moment. My initial reaction to this was no. You know, I didn't support Proposition Z. I didn't think it was the right use in the city, and I don't see expanding it. My second thought is, the council, this is coming from the council. It's the direction they want to go. If we say no, then we kind of lose our influence and our control. I like the idea of with the use permits specifying a distance from residential uses, making that recommendation to them. So that's, that's my struggle tonight, so I, anyway, that's where I'm at. Commissioner, Student Commissioners, any comments? Hold the mic close.
Okay. I have a question about the specific plan, Area D. Is that just open area or is it...
It's open space.
Surface space, okay. So is it, it could be possibly in that area as well?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's open space.
Open space, okay. Awesome. Thank you.
So just, just the white area, Area B, which is all the industrial development on the south side of the city, so. All right. So that's where I'm at. I appreciate some guidance from the rest of you as to where you, where you're at on this issue. Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. This is completely separate and apart from bringing the product into the retail chain, so I don't have a problem with this at all. This is, as long as there's not an effect on the, the physical location of homes or businesses next door. I mean, I can tell you in my company, we lease tons of space across the country, and there has been discussions of, do we lease space in a building with another tenant that is associated with marijuana? No right answer to that question. People have to decide that for themselves. But if there's no negative effect day-to-day, other than perception, which isn't necessarily wrong, but perception is subjective to the person making that decision, I have no problem allowing for more manufacturing industry in the business park area. I think it's a, I think if we don't allow for the regulation ourselves, Sacramento and the state will put restrictions or allowances in place, and we probably would be happier to make those decisions ourselves.
So Carl's better, Oceanside, or Rescindido will allow it.
Right.
Commissioner Kramer, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was coming to the meeting from the same place you were, because my mind for testing looked something like a Cheech and Chong movie. So that's, or the beer tasting place, that's where, so. I like what you've presented, and I'm very satisfied with the definitions for what testing means, and I am very much in support of Commissioner Garretson's thought about putting some restrictions, separations between that and the housing. So I will support it if, if we get a motion that says that. Thank you.
I would move that we approve this as written, with the addition that there needs to be some consideration for distance from residences. Just that general recommendation.
Mr. Connolly, is that good enough, or do, should we have a number?
Sure, that's good enough, but I can tell you from my experience dealing with the city council, it's going to throw them into a world of long discussion, so if you have a number, it would be great to put it out there. I mean, if you say 300 feet, you're probably going to include, you know, every property that's at least adjacent and maybe another lot back.
Okay.
300 feet is the buffer that is in other parts of the specific plan for noxious uses.
Isn't, isn't there something in Measure Z that says 600 feet, like from schools and other things? Schools and daycare centers and...
Yes, I believe it's 600 feet for schools. There's also a separation requirement between other cannabis dispensaries, so there's a distribution. I'll point out that the testing laboratories are much more like scientific, you know, very high-end, technical, low, I believe lower-impact uses, whereas the quantity of cannabis at a distribution facility or manufacturer is going to be far, far larger, I believe.
Yeah, my concern is not the testing. My concern is the manufacturing, and the manufacturing can produce smells that could be a problem. I know there are regulations, but I think we have an obligation to protect the residents, so I would say 600 feet.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with 600 feet. Commissioner Kramer?
I second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amendments with a 600-foot separation from residential. Is that correct? Okay. Please cast your vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
I would move that we approve this as written, with the addition that there needs to be some consideration for distance from residences. Just that general recommendation.
Mr. Conley, is that good enough, or do, should we have a number?
Sure, that's good enough, but I can tell you, from my experience dealing with the City Council, it's going to throw them into a world of long discussion, so if you have a number, it would be great to put it out there. I mean, if you say 300 feet, you're probably going to include, you know, every property that's at least adjacent, and maybe another lot back.
Okay.
300 feet is the buffer that is in other parts of the specific plan for noxious uses.
Isn't there something in Measure Z that says 600 feet, like from schools and other things? Schools and daycare centers and...
That's retail. Yes, I believe it's 600 feet for schools. There's also a separation requirement between other cannabis dispensaries, so there's a distribution. I'll point out that the testing laboratories are much more like scientific, you know, very high-end, technical, low, I believe, lower-impact uses, whereas the quantity of cannabis at a distribution facility or manufacturer is going to be far, far larger, I believe.
Yeah, my concern is not the testing. My concern is the manufacturing. And the manufacturing can produce smells that could be a problem. I know there are regulations, but I think we have an obligation to protect the residents, so I would say 600 feet.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with 600 feet. Commissioner Kramer?
I second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amendments with a 600-foot separation from residential. Is that correct? Okay. Please cast your vote.
Can we clarify?
Sure.
Maybe not. That is for manufacturing and distribution, correct? Or is that for testing as well? That's for all uses?
My thought was just for manufacturing and distribution.
Okay, that would be...
The testing, I've looked at some of the testing facilities, and they're big, but big-money issues.
Thank you.
And they're not going to be a problem for the neighbors, in my opinion.
Appreciate that.
All right, the motion passes unanimously, so, very good. Well, that was, that was an interesting discussion. Thank you, Commissioner Garretson, for providing some guidance on that. I, like Commissioner Kramer said, I, I wasn't, wasn't going for it, this, until, till the discussion. Okay, the next item on our agenda are reports and comments from commission members. Any, any reports or comments? Commissioner Bell?
Just quickly, kudos to the city for the stuff that's going in, the buildings that we've approved and have gone through us in the last couple of years. Delphi Corner, the downtown Main Street, it's really, really exciting, and not just for me personally, but from people I know, families. I mean, it really is encouraging to see things changing. And, you know, again, it's subjective, but I am very positive and happy with the things I'm seeing, so.
I get calls from residents all the time that say the complete opposite of what you're saying, so I appreciate it.
But, well done.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yeah, I think we heard just the opposite of that earlier, but that's... The project on Vista, or on Civic Center Drive by Santa Fe, the old motel...
Yes.
Could we get an update on that? I noticed that I can see the top of the buildings.
Yeah, the 81-unit senior affordable project, three stories. Their first story is complete, they're just starting to frame out the second story. It's about, I think, 10 feet below. Street elevation is the base elevation of the building, so from the street, you'll see a good portion of the second and third stories, but probably not so much of the first story. We expect the completion in around midsummer, and, you know, occupancy probably in the fall.
Refresh my memory. What, what's that going to house, again?
I'm sorry, it's 81 units of senior affordable housing.
Senior affordable, okay. Another addition by subtraction.
Right.
And addition by addition.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Conley, are we at height now for One Main Street?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
It's fully framed out. We actually got a tour, the staff did, earlier this week, and the views are pretty cool. So, I'll arrange for the commission to have some tours when they finish out the fifth floor, and we can at least get people in there over the next couple of months, if I can do that.
Fabulous. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Student Commissioners?
Is that, oh, sorry, is that the building that's in the middle of downtown, not downtown, is it? Across the street from the railroad tracks and the transit center?
Yes.
Oh, cool. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Conley?
So, we will not have a meeting on December 3rd, as I mentioned earlier. Our next one will be December 17th. We'll definitely have at least one item on there, probably two. So, enjoy a couple of weeks off. The RENA numbers, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, are going to the Sandag Board for approval on Friday. Vista's number is 2,561 units over the next 10 years that we have to provide as affordable housing. That's about 1,300 market rate units and about 1,300 affordable units, the way the numbers play out. So, we'll be, assuming that the board approves that and there's no appeals, we'll be moving into our housing element process sometime early next year. There are a number of housing legislative changes that have come down from the state that will affect both our housing element process, as well as future review of housing projects. A lot of new restrictions, some carrots, some sticks, but there's a lot of new stuff, including changes to our ADU requirements and our density bonus requirements. So, I'll bring forward a legislative update early next year, and then we'll have a couple of ordinance updates that we'll have to bring back pretty quickly to keep up to date with the state's changes. And lastly, it's Mr. Stone's last meeting, after many, many years of legal advice here, so I just want to thank him for all of his service and wish him the best in retirement, so, thank you.
Thank you for keeping us out of trouble. So, any other comments?
Just one.
Commissioner Looney?
What I'm finding is, a lot of the cities are now allowing a junior ADU. So, you can have your main residence, accessory dwelling unit, and then you can have a junior accessory dwelling unit.
So, the state changes that go into effect on January 1 allow that. They allow an ADU plus another junior ADU, or what they call a limited detached ADU, which can be a one-story, not to exceed a certain size. So, we will have to change our requirements to bring back what the state is allowing in our code.
And the...
It also includes limitations on HOA's ability to restrict ADUs within their communities, so similar to what the cities are saddled with. It doesn't say you can't do it, but it says you have to have certain restrictions on what you do restrict. In other words, that you have to allow it in some form in most HOAs. But, there are new rules that are coming into play January 1, so those of you who are on the HOA board should look them up.
All right. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned until December 17th. Thank you very much.